Roll call to me. Mr. Miller.
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to take responsibility for the Pledge of Allegion?
I could hear that.
But I have no.
Either.
I need to read it.
You do, okay, very good.
Well, I don't get to say goodbye. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. It is the law, the letter chain of the Husker.
Fine, thank you. Well, you're welcome, and you know what? I would like to, I know this is our order right now, but I'd like to know if you would be responsible for doing the same if we're finding some young people that will be willing to come there and say it.
Rather than this. Okay, I'll do my best.
Okay, I really appreciate that, thank you, gentlemen. All right, well, with that, let's go to a roll call. I'll come in and please note, trust me to contend us and staff in attendance. And let's go to the Statement of Public Hearing, Jesse, you can read that in, please.
Certainly. Statement of Public Hearing, the purpose of this hearing is for public review and comment regarding the park and police facilities impact fees, impact fee needs assessment and the amendments to Chapter three point four four, impact fees of the Village of Grafton Municipal Code related to park and recreation and police facility, police facility impact fees. Um, with us this evening is, uh, uh, Mr. Master from the Trilogy Consulting Group, uh, who we contracted with, um, for the study. Um, either, uh, now or during the business item, she would be able to, uh, speak to her study and the results thereof, and we have a slideshow. I guess that would be the purview of the board if we want to lead with that presentation or comment first.
That's cool.
Slide show.
Okay, uh, let me, uh, share my screen, um, in order to have the slideshow up and running.
All right, thank you, um, and by way of introduction, um, as we're getting this lined up here, um, Christie to master Trilogy Consulting, um, I've been working with municipalities across Wisconsin on, um, implementing and managing impact fees. Um, did my first impact fee study in nineteen ninety-eight, so about four years after the Wisconsin first implemented its impact fee law. So worked in a lot of different, um, communities, a lot of different types of impact fee situations over the years. Um, I wanted to, you know, give you a little bit of a brief overview on impact fees in general and then the study itself and, and then happy to answer any questions you might have. Can you put this in full slide presentation view or?
Um, it is on our side if you would just like to. Um, basically, I can see you speaking if you just want to give me a signal and I can move slides really.
Perfect, okay, if you want to go to the next slide. Um, I just want to touch on some real basic stuff here in case there's any folks in the audience who aren't familiar with impact fees or anybody on the board needs a refresher. Um, as a real, real basic thing, you know, impact fees are, they're kind of what they sound like, their fees charged to new development to help pay for, um, the impacts that new development has on your municipal infrastructure and the need to expand it, um, as you get new growth in the community. And they can be basically used for almost any type of municipal infrastructure and facilities, um, with the exception of, um, general administrative, you know, village hall type facilities. And the other question I get asked a lot is, uh, no, they cannot be used for fire trucks, even though I know those are large capital, um, items. Um, and these are charged in addition to any subdivision infrastructure requirements that you have, um, because they're really intended to be a method to recoup the cost of those larger kind of community-wide facilities that, um, you know, development sort of creates the need for over time. So again, the larger community facilities, um, not your local subdivision streets are what these are intended to pay for. And go to the next slide. Um, I hopefully don't get it out of sync here because I can't see which slide you're on. Um, so there's some procedural requirements for impact fees, um, under Wisconsin statutes sixty-six point oh six one seven. Um, kind of the biggest one is, is, um, preparing a study that really spells out what you are intending to, um, you know, pay for with the impact fees and how you arrive at that amount and you have to make sure you're not, um, well, I'll get to that on the next slide in terms of standards for the amount of the fees. Um, so you have to prepare the study, um, let it be out there for public review for twenty days, hold a public hearing and then ultimately adopt an ordinance. Um, and the fees themselves are paid at the time of building permit. Um, moving on to the next one, um, in terms of standards for the amounts of impact fees, there are some specific things listed in Wisconsin statutes. Um, couple of these, like the first one in that, um, fifth one there are really related to making sure that you're limiting the fees to things that are, are new expanded facilities that are required to serve new growth and you're not using them to replace existing facilities or to upgrade things for your existing residents. Um, you also have to have some actual capital costs or reasonable estimates to base them on. Um, you can't double collect, so if you're getting, if you're getting funds from grants or special assessments or developer contributions, you have to exclude those dollar amounts. And then that last, um, bullet point there is highlighted in bold, um, that was a new, uh, standard that was added to the statute recently in twenty seventeen. Um, so you, not only do you have to sort of in general make sure that new growth in the community as a whole isn't paying more than its proportionate share. Um, you also have to make sure that you're, that each new development is paying its proportionate share. So you have to have a kind of a reasonable basis for determining how much you charge each new development. Um, so that's kind of a general overview of impact fees. Um, if you go to the next slide, got a chart that shows what your fees are right now and what we're proposing to, um, change those to. Um, so currently you have three impact fees for one for parks and rec, one for police station and one for public works facilities. So we're not proposing any change to the public works facility, facility fee. Um, a slight reduction in the park and rec facilities impact fee and a more substantial increase in the police station fee. Um, so in total, this would be for a single family home, an increase of about two hundred and sixty-five dollars. So fairly modest, um, change. Going on to the next slide, um, I have a community impact fee comparison. Um, you know, it, it's just always interesting to see kind of where you compare it to other, uh, rapidly growing municipalities in the metro area, so. Um, in, in these amounts, just to explain, um, these amounts include your sewer connection fee, equivalent residential connection charge. I've got the, there's a lot of different types of sewer and water connection or hookup fees that municipalities charge, so just to kind of keep it and, uh, apples to apples comparison, I've got all those included in here. Um, so your, your fees are fairly modest and would stay fairly modest, um, relative to other communities with this proposed increase. All right, going on to the next one. Um, you may recall, we did, I did a review of the village's impact fees last July. Um, and noted that the police impact fee study had not been reviewed or updated since two thousand and four. Um, there was some really, I guess, overly optimistic projections of residential growth that were used in that study that have not, you know, panned out in reality, so the revenues have come in slower than projected, so we're updating those um, development projections to make it more realistic. Um, and then on the parks, uh, you know, there was, there's been a methodology in place, they've been reviewed roughly every five years and um, so there's really no issues with the methodology or kind of the revenue collection and all that, but, um, the fees were strictly based on, um, acquiring and developing brand new parks. And so the discussion I had with village staff was that you can, uh, also use impact fees to recover the cost of new amenities or facilities in existing parks as long as you address that in the impact fee study. So we did address, um, the new pavilion at Veterans Memorial Park in the updated study. Um, and then there've been some changes in Wisconsin statutes, um, in, uh, twenty seventeen, so part of this was processes, just, um, updating your ordinance to reflect those changes. So now I want to just talk a little bit about the specific impact fees themselves and kind of what's included in here, and I can get into more detail if you want, but just to give you some highlights. Um, the police impact fee I updated, um, to reflect the actual cost of that project and also, like I mentioned before, the, um, revised development projections. So, um, when that the impact fee study was initially done, the remodeling of the existing space was not included in the impact fee, so we continued to leave that out. Um, but the building expansion portion of it was determined to be one hundred percent impact fee eligible. So kind of overall, um, that fee was intended to recover about seventy-seven percent of the cost of that new facility, you know, expanded and remodel facility that was done in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. Um, as I mentioned earlier, you need to make sure you're covering the appropriate amount from each new development. Um, the police station does serve both residential and non-residential development. There's a complicated analysis in the study that looked at, um, allocating part of that cost to residential, um, based on protecting people, um, part of it looked at protecting property value and then part of it looked at, um, new traffic generated by new development. So out of all of that, about a million dollars, um, we're projecting to be recovered from residential and one point six from non-residential development. Um, based on projected units from all the way from two thousand and three, since you've been collecting that fee since two thousand and three, through our new extended horizon of twenty forty. Um, we're expecting about twelve hundred and forty-six new housing units and about three billion square feet of non-residential development, um, so that yields those fees per unit of new development in two thousand and four dollars. Um, the village has been increasing these fees by CPI over the years and that kind of is two reasons for that, one is to help recover the interest costs on the financing and the other piece of that is to, um, the reason for that is to keep these fees at, uh, you know, a current amount for somebody that, you know, equivalent current amount for somebody who paid back in two thousand and five, let's say, versus somebody who pays today. Um, so applying those inflationary factors that yields the recommended fees of eleven hundred and thirty dollars per residential unit and seventy-five cents per square foot of non-residential. Uh, moving on to the next slide, just to highlight a couple of things on the park impact fee. Um, this again, use the same methodology, basically that was used last time this was updated in twenty twenty. Um, looking at acres of new land acquisition and, um, acres of new land development per thousand, um, residents. Um, so we've got about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars included in here for land acquisition between now and twenty thirty, um, three hundred and three dollars for development and then for Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion, there was an analysis that I did that looks at, you know, what share of that's for replacing the existing pavilion, what part of that is upgrading the service capacity, you know, the, the standards, I guess, the amount of facility space available for existing residents and then a small portion of that is for serving new growth between now and twenty thirty. Um, and then with the number of new units of development between now and twenty thirty, a hundred and sixty-nine houses projected. Um, so that yields that fee of forty-two sixty-two per single-family residence. And then I just want to talk real briefly about what the, the fee revenues are used for, um, on the next slide. So for public works, um, there's no change to that fee, um, that study identified thirty point nine percent of that new facility could be paid for with impact fees and so, um, you've been using the fee revenues have been applied to, to that, um, debt service, um, for debt that was issued in two thousand and six and two thousand and nine. Um, that debt is expected to be retired in twenty twenty-seven and the total amount of principal and interest payments on there that's eligible for recovery through impact fees is about two point two million. Um, as of the end of twenty twenty-two, you had recovered about sixty-four percent of that. So I, I do expect that it will probably, you'll probably be recovering some of that cost beyond twenty twenty-seven. Um, and then that would essentially kind of pay back the village's general fund for the impact fee share of debt service. Um, similarly with police, that's been going to pay off debt that was issued in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. Um, that seventy-seven percent of that debt would amount to about four point three million of principal and interest payments, um, and that's going to be retired this year. As of end of twenty twenty-two, you'd only recovered about thirty-seven percent of that, so that's going to take, um, a bit yet to, to recoup all of that through impact fees. Um, and then parks, it's just been applied on a pay, pay-as-you-go basis, so the village had, you know, collects park impact fee revenues, puts them in a fund and then as you're doing various projects or land acquisition, um, those get used to pay for part of that, so that would, you know, be, um, how we'd expect that to continue and then you can use part of those revenues towards the, the new pavilion. Uh, I don't know if I need to get into too much on the next slide, ordinance updates, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a number of ordinance updates and those are mainly to incorporate changes to Wisconsin statutes. Also to, um, in, you know, um, implement the new fee amounts that we've recommended by referring to the latest impact fee studies. And then also added a provision for the village, um, to adopt impact fee increases that are less, um, than the change in CPI. You know, if you're in a situation again where CPI is really high or there's some other reason why you don't want to automatically increase them, that explicitly gives you that, uh, excuse me, option. Um, and so then finally, I guess, just, you know, we're kind of on the last two steps of that process tonight of, um, public hearing and ordinance adoption. So take any questions now or during the, the, um, the item for discussion.
We'll go ahead with, uh, questions now, um, if that seems to be appropriate, Jesse. Yep, so, uh, if any, anybody from the public have questions or comments regarding this? Please stand, state your name.
Uh, Bill. Bill Harbeck, nine oh seven seventeen, the avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I see this on the microphone. Yeah, I had two questions. One relates to the projected population increase as it relates to the parkland impact and fee assessment. And this is on page fifteen. And it projects that between now and twenty thirty, there's going to be an increase in two hundred and thirty-five people in the Village of Grafton. Uh, that seems very low to me based upon what's happened in the past. Question one is, does that account for the added population increase from the Farmstead and the Seasons, which are about four hundred and fifty apartments? Times two is nine hundred people just for those. Does it account for stonewall harms with all those households that will be added? Those, those are right on the horizon, so I don't know if, uh, how, how those, how you get to two fifteen with those. The other piece of this is we've averaged from twenty two thousand to twenty twenty, eighty new people per year.
Sure, Bill, so your question is.
My, my question is, if I can finish that last piece.
Yeah.
Eighty people per year. This assumes for the next six years, we're going to add a total of two hundred and fifteen, which is thirty-five.
Right.
So how do those numbers, how do those numbers jive with this?
Right. Do you want to address those, that question about how the numbers, uh, equate?
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the biggest discussions I had with village staff in preparing the study. Um, so I basically used the, the twenty thirty projected population and households from the, um, villagers comprehensive plan and, um, I think that ties in with what the Department of Administration has projected for the village. Um, and, you know, understandably, we've had a lot of, of new permits issued in the last few years, so, um, we, we did talk about whether to update those projections or not, um, and opted not to, to, to stay with kind of what's officially on the books, um, within the villages plan. Um, now, that being said, if you do get more, um, development than, than that between now and twenty thirty, that would bring in more revenues than what's projected in the study, um, and there would also probably be some acceleration in um, planning for park acquisition and development to keep up with that. Um, I mean, the, the growth has, has been, it's not, um, it's not even year by year, but the, the amount, the village has, has really kept pace well as far as like continue to add and, and maintain that parkland, um, ratio for its residents as, as that growth has occurred, so.
Christie, so, so just to, just to, um, kind of bring this and maybe answer Bill's question here, is it's a conservative, very conservative, uh, estimation of what our growth is. And I think, you know, on, on average, over the last ten years, Bill, we've grown about a hundred, a hundred per year.
Eighty to a hundred, yeah.
Eighty to one hundred. And in reality, with the population that we have, given, you know, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but given apartments is, apartments are very dense, we wouldn't be necessarily counting population, more so that we'd be counting square feet, correct? Christie?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, what was the question again?
So, um, what I, what I said was, is that when it comes to apartments, um, apartment complexes and, and Bill's absolutely right, both four hundred, you know, let's call it upper four hundreds, uh, in, in apartments that are being developed right now, uh, we would not be counting those as, you know, really with population, that's based on square footage, correct? Or is that it based on housing units?
It's based on housing units.
Okay.
Yeah, the, 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 the reds, the multifamily would, would be charged the same as a, as a residential, single-family residential unit.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I was.
Your question?
Sort of, I, I guess, uh, so it doesn't account for the, the known increase from those two apartment buildings and stonewall harms. And she's given the reasons, but at this point, two fifteen is just off, and I don't know if you added those with that increase, the park, her park and rec.
I, I.
Proposed fee.
Oh, pardon me, uh, my apologies, didn't mean to interrupt, but it's important to also understand, we just established a brand new neighborhood park in Riverbend Park, which would actually partially serve those approved, um, multifamily developments on, on the east side along Court Road. Um, so that plays into the, uh, part of the consideration as well, but as pointed out, being a conservative estimate, anything above and beyond that frankly is an advantage to the village as far as collecting, um, ahead of pace as outlined in the study. Um, so it actually wouldn't be a bad thing per se.
I, I just want to add too, I, maybe I think that's maybe a little confusing about this, so any, um, any unit for which a permit has already been issued, has paid the impact fee. Um, so we, we counted those in the existing population. Even though maybe those units aren't built yet, maybe there's not people living in them yet, but if they've already paid their fee, you know, from the perspective of the impact fee that's existing, you can't, you know, they've already paid the fee, so we're really just trying, we were trying to really limit this to, um, additional units that'll be permitted.
Okay, I, and I thought, I thought you might, sure, that was one of the things that I thought might be the partly, the explanation. The other question I had is the CPI increase that you're proposing again, does that apply to all three of these facilities? So the fees we're seeing in your schedule now, each year will go up by the CPI?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Good. Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, appreciated. Les, please stand, state your name.
Let's go up the way at Sunset Court. How does this affect the impact fees that public works department charges for new development? So, so is the heat used charge for, for, uh, lift stations and all this other stuff, because are we going to be restricted to that charge or?
There's no change to the other fees, those will remain the same, this, we're only talking about a change to park impact fees and police station impact fees.
Okay, so our fee stays the same? Or we still have the ability to?
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that this, this, this fee that we've had was, or what these impact fees are for, the existing building that we had for the MSF, correct?
Yeah, right, the, this, this, the DPW building, the impact fee is still recovering for the new facility that was built in two thousand I don't remember if that was two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, somewhere in that timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Les, does that answer your question?
Well, we're charging impact fees to developers based on acreage due to this, the, uh, lift stations and names we have to bring into those areas.
Uh, I think we're, I, I don't think that's totally.
So those are separate from impact. Yeah, those, those are different, right.
A lot considered impact.
Okay.
Those are separate.
All right, yeah. Are you good with that? Good, anything else? Uh, any other questions here, public? Okay, well, close public hearing at this point in time, uh, I guess I will leave it to the board here, do we want to ask questions at this point in time? Uh, do you have any questions? Because I know we're going to come back and look at, um, at, at this, uh, again, after the public hearing, but any questions for, for Christie at this point in time? Lisa?
Do you, you want us to wait until we talk about it later?
If you have a specific question for Christie, I don't think Christie's going to be on for the actual presentation, correct?
So Christie, by way of clarification, the way our agenda is set, so we've held the public hearing, um, you've done this initial presentation, there were some questions from the public. Uh, we have a few, uh, business items to take care of and then we get to the action item pertaining to, um, accepting the, the fees as presented in the ordinance updates. Um, so I guess there's a couple of options. Um, Christie, you could stay with us online or the village board could agree to take that business item seven A out of order. Um, prior to the minutes approval, persons requesting to be heard and report. Um, that is an option, um, and then we could release, uh, Mr. Master from the remainder of the agenda.
Well, let's go with consensus here, Dave. You okay going now or?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
No. Oh. Okay, very good, let's go to, um, confirmation, uh, I'm sorry, let's go to accept our least facilities impact fee study and for related amendments to municipal code three four four as presented. Jesse, do you need to rule that out or do you just want to go right into what it?
Really, Mr. Masters', um, uh, presentation covered everything that was in the statutes, um, including the, uh, proposed adjustments and the reason why, so I would really not have anything to add other than just a, a significant point of clarification. Yes, it still calls for consumer price index related increases, however, the updates would provide flexibility where if, say, the consumer price index soars, we can adopt a lesser uh, adjustment. So let's say CPI hits twelve percent, we could adopt an eight percent change to the impact fees. It, this, these updates provide us that flexibility, so that's an important point of clarification here, otherwise, everything else was covered very, very well by Mr. Master.
Okay, typically, we go for a motion and a second, but because we just heard her, um, her presentation, I think what we can do is just go ahead and ask her questions directly, if that's okay with you. Then we'll do a motion in a second, uh, to go to the poll, so, uh, let's start, Lisa, why don't you start?
Sure, um, I have a general question on our, um, recommendation here, uh, Jesse. So it also says that staff is recommending an increase of three point four percent to the public works impact fee to reflect the consumer price index.
Correct.
So is that as a catch-up? Because I thought we just said that we kind of do that routinely every year anyway.
That is a catch-up because, as you recall, um, I believe, uh, last year or the year before, we, uh, last year, I believe, we put any adjustments to the impact fees on a whole because of A, the pending study and B, at that point, the consumer price index had soared to about eight percent. And we weren't necessarily comfortable in recommending an eight percent adjustment without, uh, a study of these dated impact fees at the time, and so, yes, that three point four percent that's recommended is a bit of a catch-up, yes.
Okay, and so that only needed to be caught up on the public works and not the other departments?
Correct, because the other departments have, or the other impact fees have recommendations specifically tied to them in different amounts, that is a standalone, uh, recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so being that we're talking about impact fees and what they can and can't be used for, one of the things that I am concerned about going ahead in the future, this certainly would be something that we could start an impact fee for the fire department in lieu of new construction, um, for the fire department. I'm clear not to say remodeling, because we need to build onto the fire department. Is that something that we can talk about in the near future and put on an agenda because a lot of this needs a criteria for the fire department?
It does, and absolutely, that may be a discussion to have, once, uh, those planning efforts get to a point where we start talking about facilities with regards to the, uh, fire department. Absolutely, I see that coming forward to the village board.
Okay.
At this point in time, no, but I, I do see it being a discussion.
Because we did talk about it a little bit last year.
Yeah.
Um, my other questions are.
Just, uh, take on to that, I think with the, with the development of the, um, the district, so to speak.
Right.
Uh, we're going to need to kind of, kind of do that, but I, absolutely, I think that's a great idea, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think we mentioned it maybe last year or something. Um, and, um, so I'm also wondering about, um, it said somewhere that there needs to be separate accounts for each of these impact fees, do we currently have that?
Yes, we account for them, um, I, I apologize, um.
I was, I was hoping Paul was here.
Yeah.
I, I didn't mean to ask you that, Chris.
We, we do, um, make sure to, uh, make sure those are isolated within our accounting structure, so we can very quickly identify the who, what, when, where and why if a question is asked about, um, okay, you've collected X amount of park impact fees, how was that used? Here you go. We are able to produce those reports.
So we currently then have three of those for each of those three departments?
We have, right, we have each of the, um, various types of impact fees accounted for separately within our system, yes, um, that is within our, uh, accounting system, yes.
Okay.
Have to, um, have the, uh, finance director shoot you the minutia of it, but I do know they are isolated as standalone accounting items.
Okay, um, and then it also said that the village board should be kept apprised yearly from the, um, finance director of, of, of the committees, I mean, of the, of the, um, accounts and what's been spent and how much we have left in the accounts, so that we really know what we have going. Um, and I, I don't recall ever getting that, but I was thinking Paul might have sent it out, so maybe at some point we can talk about that. Um, it also talks about, um, oh, we talked about the automatic adjustments and again, uh, this looks great because I do think that we need to keep up with the impact fees with the development. My big concern also though was the new development that we have. Have those building permits been issued yet for the two new developments on the east side?
Approvals have building permits, I know there are no building permits, um, issued for the Farmstead, I would have to check to see what, if any, have been issued for the, um, Seasons. I know the Seasons is starting site prep, I don't know if any construction permits have been issued yet, I would have to verify that and I'd be happy to know if I.
So, so then they haven't paid any impact fees yet?
If no building permits, construction permits have been issued, they would not have paid any fees yet.
Right, so then we can expect to make, uh, a lot of money. Right, so then we can expect to make uh a lot of money there.
Uh, certainly through permit revenue and impact fee revenue, yeah, I mean, absolutely, a- as with uh any new development, yep.
Okay, all right, um, I think that's it for now, I I am concerned about the fact that the numbers don't seem to dive. So um, maybe we can talk about that more later.
Yeah, well, I'll think about it uh while we go to other people and come back to you.
Sounds good.
Uh, Andy, welcome, uh, great to have you here, do you have any questions on this? Okay, very good, Amy, you have questions?
Yes, um, the, I guess part of that question is also was confusing with the projection of homes being a hundred ninety six new ones between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty, twenty thirty, which would come out to like three hundred thirty eight people, if you figure two people per home. But yet indicated two hundred thirty five at the end of that report, so I don't know if we need to update those projections or.
Sure.
That's.
Sure, I guess something to consider and Mr. Master pointed it out too, um. When establishing or revising or updating impact fees, you need to make sure you have tangible and sound reasoning for what you're collecting and how you're using it. And the numbers that were set forth in this report, yes, are conservative admittedly, but that is also based upon an adopted comprehensive plan that the village has in file and state of Wisconsin Department of Administration numbers. Basically, they're not arbitrary i- is where I'm going with that. So in another way to look at it is those numbers to set forth those fee calculations, they're defensible. And that's very, very important when enacting an impact fee. You need it for reasonable purposes and you need it based upon reasonable projections. Uh, another thing to consider is uh, we also erred on the side of conservative estimates. Because again, as the uh presentation pointed out, the police department impact fee was based on pie in the sky projections. And it's going to take us more time than we thought to make up that ground because of those initial projections being so um favorable, if you will, um versus conservative. And so, yes, they're conservative, um, staff is admitted admitting to that, we're upfront and clear about that. Uh, Ms. The Master and her study is upfront and clear about that. But again, it's based in tangible numbers that are set forth in our land use code, our land use plan, but also set forth by the state of Wisconsin estimates, and so they're tangible and again defensible.
Stand, thank you. And then I see the revised information that the dollar amounts are are all redlined, so it's just going to be adjusted annually, if people want to know, they call the clerk to find out what the actual dollar amounts. Each year, they're not going to be listed anymore in the codes.
Correct, because we update them regularly, so it will require posting and village board action to update those. Um, and then, yes, they are posted uh in our community development department and communicated during the permitting process. So we are very upfront, transparent with all of these uh fees charged.
And then just to clarify what you said about the accounts for each impact fee apartment, it's not an actual different physical financial account, but within the accounting information, Paul has it just slated that this is this.
We haven't absolutely identified.
It's not separate accounts.
What it is identified as, yes, absolutely.
Jim, nothing, or Cap?
Um, I don't have any questions, but the um presentation was laid out really nice, it was very easy to follow and understand, so thank you.
Thank you for that, Dave. I have one question, probably very obvious, but these numbers for the people, that also takes into account for people that died, move away, correct?
Yeah, it does take into account that the household size in the village has been declining and is projected to continue to to decline. Um, so that is definitely ref- reflected in there, that's that's the net population change that, you know, reflects both new housing and smaller household sizes for existing houses. Um, I also just wanted to jump on there too and just add, as far as the population and household projections, that um, if you look at the numbers um in the study for um twenty twenty through twenty thirty for both population and households, it's a very similar amount of growth from the previous decade. So i- it's just that a lot of it has occurred very quickly over the last couple of years. Um, and that's that's reflected in that that current twenty twenty four number.
Very good, uh, Lisa, any more questions?
Um, just one, if if they're say that the state statutes um do recommend that the village is supposed to report to the developer what their um impact fees are being used for. And I don't know that we've ever done that or I've never known that, so uh maybe you can look into that. Yeah, it does say that the statute needs to apply for that, it needs to account for that. Um, and as long as it's easy for a developer or somebody to find that information about how much the fees are, I'm fine with that, but I fear that that will put a lot of work on the clerk.
It it isn't, um, so we, when we apply for a permit, um, the impact fees are are stated that this is what the impact fee is.
They typically get like a letter breakdown of all the all the charges that are due at the time of permission.
So that 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 information is given to them for the permit.
And I think they're just really familiar with it too, the developers are.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, I mean, don't try to it's a it's a fees change.
Yeah, I I think that they're actually really aware that it changes each year.
Correct, and we are notified what the current fees are. As you may recall, um, we've had development agreements come through where we've actually had um fees set forth in a development agreement, but also a side note saying that as of January first, these may change. Um, so we, as much as we possibly can, communicate the fact that these are updated each year um to make sure everybody is on the same page if we're up on it, definitely.
And hopefully we also stay, because it's it's best to be upfront, you know, this this is going to change yearly depending on the CPI.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Very good, any other further comments? Okay, um, you know, I do agree with uh Ms. Harback um regarding our reporting, Jesse. So I think that we need to have uh twice a month, uh twice a, twice a year reporting. Um, on, you know, I think on where we sit with our impact fees, I think that'd be really helpful. We could maybe establish like, um, let's just say, I'm picking something out of the air, maybe March and September, that we would get an idea where where we are uh for the first three months and then where we get into the next three months.
Absolutely.
That would be, so, we can do that, so.
Absolutely.
Very good, so at this point in time, I'll need a motion in a second, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
The motion in second, any further discussion on this? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and a motion carries. Thank you very much, Christie did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into the meat of the uh uh agenda, uh, looking for an approval, a motion in a second to approve the April first twenty twenty four board meetings and file the March eleventh twenty twenty four both public works, March twelfth, Public Safety Committee, March thirteenth, Architectural Review Board Minutes, meeting minutes as presented. Or maybe motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any additions, corrections? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, person who's requesting to be heard on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Pardon?
I'm Clark Evans.
Very good, Mr. Evans, floor is yours.
All right, so Clark Evans, eleven thirteen being in court. Uh, just wanted to express my gratitude to you all, the village trustees, the village president, boards on ten and a half third months working together. I'm proud of all that we were able to accomplish in the last ten and a half months, and thank you for the opportunity, the collegiality, the fiber of nature that you all brought to the table. Also want to express my gratitude to the village staff, several of you are here, uh, and hopefully this can be passed on to the larger village staff as well. It's a pleasure working with you all throughout my time as a trustee. You all are a great staff and great leadership throughout the village, and um I'm rooting for you all, rooting for you all as the new village board as well. Uh, your success is the village's success, so my best wishes to you all and the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, Clark, we appreciate your your service to the village. Anyone else? Okay, very good, we'll move on. Um, uh, this is presented by the president, uh, just a couple of things I want to bring up uh regarding um meetings and uh procedures and expectations this year. So first of all, I want to make sure that all trustees are aware, as we had uh put out in writing three times last year, that if you do want to have an agenda item addressed, please let Jesse and I know. Very simple thing to do, send us an email week before the meeting or earlier, and we will make sure that we review it and see if we can get that on the agenda. Last year, we only had two requests for agenda items, so um we would like to see if you want to discuss something, you think it's important, please let us know, we'll get it on the agenda if it's possible. Second thing, uh, per legal advice and state statute nineteen point eight uh two, also uh, back twelve open minutes, trustees cannot address the board or the public if not part of the agenda. Um, I want to make sure you all have a copy of that, so want to be fair and equitable to all. If you have the ability to add an agenda to the item, uh, item to the agenda, that's great, but moving forward, um, trustees cannot make a, um, can't violate the law, and we're not going to allow uh folks to make a public statement um in front of the uh, in front of the board. Um, public comment, I want to address this too, public comment uh is not really required by state law um uh during business meetings, however, we do want to hear the public. And I want to make sure everybody is very clear on this, you can speak on agenda or non-agenda items. If you want to address an agenda item and you have something you want to say, please let us know. We'll take that under consideration when we have our discussion um on either agenda or non-agenda items. One of the things is I know that some of you may be concerned that that two minutes isn't long enough. Well, let me tell you something, we will give you two minutes, we'll stretch it to two and a half. But part of the problem I had before I came here is um previous president would say, okay, we've heard that, you're repeating yourself and we want to stop, I don't want to do that. What I'd really like to do is we get two minutes and we just tell you, listen, um, you have thirty minute, thirty second, thirty minutes, thirty seconds to wrap up. If you can just wrap it up, we greatly appreciate it, that way everybody has a fair chance to discuss. Um, also, uh, notice, uh, we're not really good at bad key notices, uh, therefore we're violating state law. So I've asked the clerk to give me an idea of how many folks show up at meetings and not notify her. Um, let's just get better at that, if you're going to be there, um, just just let the clerk know, so uh we can notice it. Uh, lastly, uh, actually two more things, Robert's rules of orders are going to be followed regarding speaking on items. Uh, offers first and second motions will have first rights of discussion in that order. Of course, everybody will have a chance to be heard, but we really want the uh offers, first and second motions to have first ability to uh discuss. And remember, if you make an offer, a motion for the second, doesn't mean you have to vote for it, it's just to get it to the board. Last, the expectation of board members are quarterly meetings with the village administrator. I'd like to make sure everybody has an opportunity to at least meet with their village administrator on a quarterly basis. I think that's good for our village board, it helps you get information, um, and it keeps you up to date. Uh, so at least quarterly meetings is all I ask of you, uh, if you could do that, I greatly appreciate it. Next, going on to uh next item here with me. Confirmation of village board uh committee commission assignments, April twenty fourth through twenty five. That has been part of the uh minutes here, um, that has been included, I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in second, any discussion on that?
Sure. I agree. Um, so I just want to say that I'm disappointed that I uh was taken out of finance. Um, I did send my requests, which were financing public works. Um, I've been on finance for nine years and for a lot of people, it's more than a lot of people who've even been here. Um, I feel like I have a lot of expertise in the finances of the village, there's some things that I can refer back to. I think um, I think that I'm a strong person on finance and I just have to say that I'm disappointed that I didn't get financed, and I will not be voting for that committee.
And thank you for your offer to support me in any, any committee that uh you've gone on, that, I appreciate that. Yes, Jim?
So I wanted to just kind of go over with you what the process that you went through as far as assigning these how many positions and Lisa with fourteen years of experience, I I I can't understand how how she would be taken off of my job.
Okay, so let me address that very quickly, um. I use what I believe is experience, job, uh, job experience, um, and also ability to work in a cohesive environment. Um, I, it doesn't mean that you can't work in cohesive environment, uh, it just means that I use that as part of the selection criteria. Per state guidelines, there are no, uh, there are no guidelines to tell me how I appoint or who I appoint. I appointed based on um the uh, based on the ordinance system. Um, I make the best decision I can, which I believe is in the best interest of the village. I make that decision and you as a trustee can agree or not, um, however, uh, you know, that's why we have a vote for approvals. And I don't agree. Point made, thank you very much, any other comments? Okay, I'll look for, I'll give a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed.
Aye.
So that's uh five two, thank you very much. Move on to proclamation of May as uh National Cities, Towns and Villages Month. Uh, we will, after this, need to have a, this is a motion, uh, a, offer a motion in a second. Correct, Jesse?
Uh, actually a proclamation, you are simply informing the board that as president, you have uh authored a proclamation on behalf of them.
Great, I'll read this as fast and as legible as I can. Proclamation, where the National League of Cities was founded in nineteen twenty four in Lawrence, Kansas, as the Mo- American Multiple Association by state municipal leagues, seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns and villages expanded rapidly. Whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interest of more than nineteen thousand cities, towns and villages across the country. Whereas today, the National League of Cities works in partnership with forty nine municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation and influence federal policies and impact local programs and operations. Whereas the voice of cities, towns and villages in Washington DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and working closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. Whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing three hundred thirty six million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical and transparent governments in the world. Whereas the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, American locals' governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. Now therefore, via result, the village of Grafton hereby claims May twenty twenty four as National Cities, Towns and Villages Month in celebration of America's loyal governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary dated at Grafton, Wisconsin, sixteenth day of April twenty twenty four, January hard to word, village president. All right. So to resolution authorizing uh the sale of real property, Jesse?
Absolutely, this is a formal action by the village board to finalize the sale of eighty seven North Green Bay Road um and the uh single family uh property that is there. Um, this is one of the final steps as we uh move towards the uh finalization of the sale. Um, the resolution sets forth recitals pertaining to the pending closure of the sale. There are um some final um approvals that need to be put in place as part of the conditions of sale. Those are working themselves out as we speak. And with that, this resolution and formal action by the village board um gives the authority um on behalf of the village board for the administrator to sign those closing documents. Um, this is very similar to the authority granted to me as the administrator to sign the initial listing documents. Um, so again, what this resolution will do is be the formal act, serve as the formal action by the village board to approve the sale, again assuming all conditions are met and authorizing me to sign on behalf of the village in accord with all of the terms that have been set forth. Should anything change, we'll be back to see it, talk about it. So this resolution only authorizes me to sign on behalf of the village to all of the agreed upon terms for the closures. Um, so with that, um, uh, the action requested is approval of the resolution, which would be an offer motion in a second, authorizing the sale of eighty seven North Green Bay Road.
I'll need to offer a motion in a second.
I'll offer.
A motion.
I said. Okay, any discussion on this at all?
I have a question.
Oh, 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 anybody else have questions?
Very good, Lisa.
Um, so what was the final price?
I believe this, three, yeah, that's all right. I I do not have the real statement of it.
As discussed, nothing changes in approved agreement.
Sure.
We're just sort of authorizing the sale and Jesse. We're clear, we've got through all the contingencies, and the idea is if we set a closing next week, you don't want to have a sudden meeting to authorize the sale, so we're just trying to get out ahead of this.
So things will move quickly in the next couple of weeks.
Ideally, yeah, we had a, we had a uh delay to get the closing for the tenant to get out, but the tenant's now out, so we're, we're cleared for landing.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, offer motion in second, any other further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, Jesse, let's go to the approval of the twenty twenty four urban area boundary as presented. Looks like we're in urban area now, huh?
We we are, we're uh moving up in the world. Um, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation reached out to the village regarding the updates to its urban bound, urban area boundaries. Urban areas are defined by US Census as individual municipalities or groups of. Urban areas are defined by U.S. Census as individual municipalities or groups of nearby municipalities with a total population of five thousand or higher. Um, that said, previously, the village of Grafton was in an urban area um as part of the city of Milwaukee. That said, with the growth in the Ozaki greater Ozaki County area, um a new um urban area boundary is being established encompassing Grafton, Cedarburg, Port Washington, Sockville um and excluding the Milwaukee area. And with that, um a formal action by the village board is required to approve a resolution that uh in turn approved. It's the urban area boundary designation. So all of this was um dictated to us by the Department of Transportation in accord with U.S. Census um uh protocols. And we're just simply looking to formally approve that creation of a new urban area boundary.
Okay, uh offer motion in second for the resolution. Oh, I'll.
I'll make the motion.
Andrew, make a second. Yay, Andrew, you got your first one in. All right, very good. Okay, uh Jim, Amy, Andrew, any questions? Jim?
No.
Amy?
So prior to this, were we part of like Milwaukee area or?
The urban area boundary that encompassed Milwaukee as well, we were part of that, yes. Uh, so now we would be a standalone as in essence, Ozaki County urban area.
Very good. Andy, any question?
Um, does this affect any type of funding that we would receive from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation since the um percentage wise now we would be a Grafton would be a greater percentage of this urban area versus the Milwaukee area?
Uh, potentially depending on the individual grant criteria. Um, what this does actually help us maintain funding eligibility through that surface transportation block program um described in IFC. Uh, part of some of WISDOT's grants deal with lane miles, you know, state road lane miles, what have you. Um, so to answer your question, it might. It really depends on the um intricacies of a specific grant program. Either way, this does help maintain or uh reestablish eligibility for these specific um uh programs listed in the IFC.
Very good. Anybody else? Lisa?
Um, and I was I'm going to tail on to what Andrew said. Um, so there must be a website that we can go on and look for any available grants then?
Uh, sure, you could uh research through the DOT, the Department of Administration, all of the state levels. Um, absolutely. There there's grant programs out there, uh plenty.
Okay.
And yeah.
So that could help our community.
It could. Absolutely.
So in matter of fact, I think that um Chief Capanera had a um grant um shared with the staff, a grant finder that I think our staff is using. So I think that uh that becomes one of the things we look at is seeing if we can find some creative funding outside of taxes. So I thank Chief for that. That was a nice village. Um, and I know Amber has looked at that and so has Jessica for potential um potential uh grants. All right, so we will need a resolution. We already do an offer motion effect. We did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's go to approve the acceptance donation of the need machine value of two thousand five hundred dollars to uh to the Grafton Parks and Recreation Center from Mel's, right, Jesse?
Correct. Uh, Mel's Charities is offering the donation of an AED machine, which we would look to place and in the new Veterans Park Pavilion. Um, due to the timing of our meetings, being village board meeting today, park and recreation meeting tomorrow, and then a significant gap until our next village board meeting, as we recall, the policy and procedure for um approving or accepting a donation is village board approval coming through committee. Um, Mel's has asked uh for consideration because they want to do a large scale donation to multiple entities and an accompany accompanying press release, not looking to hold up uh Mel's Charities goodwill gesture. We have brought this directly to the village board for consideration. Admittedly, this is outside of normal protocol, but it out of respect for the gracious donation uh being offered by Mel's Charities and the fact that this is a smaller um valued uh and non-controversial type of donation, um I felt comfortable and authorized staff to place it directly on the village board meeting agenda for consideration this evening. So yes, it is for an AED machine. We would love to place it in the um Veterans Park Pavilion. I understand Director Hoyer will be approaching Mel's Charities to potentially um uh to request a second donation for an AED or placement within the Zon Pavilion. Um, that is pending. That's all a separate and distinct request, but that is a uh thought process on staff's part.
Okay, I'll look for a motion in a second on this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in second. Uh Lisa, do you have any questions at all?
Um, just one clarification. Uh, I'm assuming that we we will not take delivery of this until Veterans Park is complete, unless we could utilize it at Zon Pavilion first.
I am not certain of what the exact uh delivery date is. Uh, but I at at the end of the day, um we would look to, we we've recognized it and identified it for the Veterans Park Pavilion. And if there's something we can do at Zon, we would do that at court.
Yeah, I think that that would probably be best to go to um to a park and rec um placement when that comes to it. So great question, Lisa. Uh you have anything you want to add, Kim?
I do.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay, all in uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, report a public safety committee. Uh, going to uh look for a motion in a second to table ordinance repealing chapter ten twenty. Highways repealing and creating ten forty weight limits.
I motion we table that.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there any explanation about that?
Um, there's just more information.
Okay, so at some point we will talk about it again.
Maybe. I don't know. I let let me just make a make a statement here. I think that there is some. Uh, now that that motion is gone, I I I first of all, I want to thank Amy for coming up with some really hard questions, and I think they're a very, very good question. We appreciate that. Uh, I think what we need to do is we need to hold on clarification and work together with the county. I think there's some clarification that needs to be done on where the counties roll to start and where they end, and I know Amber's going to work on that, and I think we'll just I think the thing right now is let's just put a hold on it. We'll see if it's even feasible to come back to it if it's coming with property. Okay, makes sense.
Sure.
Okay, very good. Let's go on to approval of Assistant Chief Police to travel out of state to Kansas City, Missouri for the annual National FBI and DEA Conference, Jesse?
Yes, a recommendation is coming forward from the uh Public Safety Committee in accord with section twelve point oh four of the employee handbook. That requires employees who are not department heads um planning to attend training outside of the, we'll call it the Greater Midwest area, um obtaining an uh approval from both the village administrator and the village board. Um, there is an approved training budget for this conference. Um, the conference is located in Kansas City, Missouri. The attendee would be um our assistant police chief, who is not a department head, and therefore this approval has come through uh our request for approval has come through um committee and ultimately to the village board. As mentioned, it is budgeted for. It is part of the ongoing um um training and refresher as part of having that FBI FBI Academy credential. Um, so therefore, it is absolutely, I feel warranted. I gave my sign off on it and it now is before the village board um for uh consideration.
Very good. Need a motion in a second?
I'm going to.
Sorry.
Hey, uh we want a second. Amy, any questions at all? Jim?
No.
Anybody else have questions on this? No questions, no questions. Okay, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Let's go to report of public works, not public, but public works, approved land rental agreement with the University of Wisconsin-Madison contingent upon identified correction from May. Jesse?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, excellent opportunity to partner with the University of Wisconsin-Madison um for a um weather station. Um, this will take readings of not only the um air and temperature, but also um the soil um nearby. Um, it is a small use of a large premises being um the village-owned property that the Grafton Little League uh has uh some facilities on. It is well away from any Grafton Little League um activities, and so it should not be disturbed whatsoever. We are um confident in that. Um, that said, great opportunity to partner and um have a a facility like this, uh very local. Um I believe the next closest facility like this may be out in Jefferson County. It is a ways away to say the least. Um, but that said, um neat opportunity here. Um, we do have the in the packet, the um agreement document with the slight updates coming out of the Board of Public Works. Can we just recommend?
All right, let me get a motion in a second on this. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that, Jim or Andy? Andy? No. Andy?
Um how how is how is this data access? Do we know as far as where do they where does the university post the data for the weather station? How does it interact with certain products they come out with?
I will have to defer to Director Thomas and actually uh Clark Evans, who helped uh facilitate this arrangement, uh may be able to answer questions as well. I apologize for putting you on the spot, Clark, but I do know you'd be helpful resource in the conversation since you are available. Uh, so with that, I would turn it over to Director.
Yeah, I'll start with it is on a website that is publicly available, so we can share that with everyone. Uh, but I don't know who else they share it with. If there's any other entities weather-wise that use the data.
Yes, so it's shared through their website, wisco.net uh wisco.edu, so an official website of the University of Wisconsin-Madison. It's also shared with the National Water Service, with the National Oceanic Administration. They ingest it as part of their large data feed of literally millions of observations every minute. They also share it with the U.S. Department of Agriculture to assist with their uh soil moisture monitoring for the National Ground Monitor. Uh, so the direct observations are most readily available through U T Madison, through the Wisco website, but they are also accessible through those other services.
Is that something that we can link to our like our website that we have like a little weather thing on our website?
We can. Absolutely. It's a great idea. Yes, we're good. Yeah.
And I'm sure it'll be reported on all the local stations as they get away from the uh get away from the uh local hikes to the local schools. I know when I pull up ours, it yeah, I uh when it comes up about weather bug, I get Cedarburg High School, which really is a gravity. Okay, we're going to segment this stuff. So, okay, uh Lisa, I know you have a question.
Yeah, sure. Um can I ask Clark a question? Clark, um, do you know if that if this with these different communities that participate, do they also volunteer and donate their their land for this type of equipment?
So this agreement comes model after one at the University that's gathered with Kenosha County.
Right.
Uh, when I saw that in a Kenosha News article, I uh asked the management people and then we're running with Director Thomas and we were very tired on whether something like this should be placed at Grafton. It's a mixture. Uh, some communities do have this type of rental agreement. Other communities should say, yeah, sure, you can do something like this, but they don't just go into a place and a public place.
Sure.
Hey, can we put a weather station here or we're just going to put one there?
Right.
There are some that are on private lands and they work directly with the landowners in those.
Do you know if UWM um has to pay any landowners?
I do not know that. Um, for public owners, I don't believe they do. For private owners, I would suspect that they prefer not to, but I don't know if they're the nature of those reasons.
Jim? Yeah, I got one. Uh, just Clark, thank you for spearheading this project. Looks like something very beneficial to the village.
That's it. Very good. Okay, any other questions? All right, Clark, I'd like to give you a gold star for bringing that to our uh to our community. That's a great, great way to put Grafton on the on the map. We really appreciate that. Without further ado, we'll take a vote here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Jesse, let's go to Department and Officers Report.
Absolutely. Happy to report Veterans Park Pavilion Project is getting off the ground slowly. We are happy to report that the gas service has officially been disconnected and that is completed. That is the first step towards uh demolition. Electrical service should be disconnected within the uh coming week. Then demolition of the building itself, of the old pavilion building itself can begin. Um, important to note, uh Veterans Park will still remain an active and open park, including uh the gala events. That said, portable restrooms um will be placed for the summer event um to standard and one ADA compliant um portable restroom will be placed to accommodate not only park users but also event attendees. Um, celebrate Grafton is helping us offset that cost. Um, and so we are looking to maintain and open and active park while constructing that new amenity. Um, hydrant flushing is scheduled to begin next week and will run through May tenth. This is all weather dependent. Uh, per usual, this has been advertised in the village's website, social media and in the local newspaper. Uh, lastly, liquor license renewal letters. It is that time of year. Um, these letters have been sent out to the current uh license holders. Inspections, uh joint inspections are to be conducted in May. Uh, the reason I mention it, these are joint inspections that are conducted as it is a team being fire department representatives, police department representatives, building inspection representatives and state of Wisconsin representatives go as a team to the individual um license folder locations to conduct their inspections as part of the renewal process. So um, those are in the works. That is what I had this evening.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jesse. Uh, let's go to uh operators licenses. Um, we have in front of us three operators um looking for a motion in a second to approve issuance of operator licenses as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any questions, Jim or Mary Pat?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, so none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Reporter bills. I didn't see much going on. Questions about the bills? Now, so um let's take a motion in a second and see if anybody has any additional questions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Good. Did you do some data? All right, any questions on the bills?
Um, I did just have one. I'm sorry, Jesse, I didn't get to this to you sooner. Um, it was on batch three, page eleven, and it was for the replacement equipment for Veterans Park fifty six thousand, you know, thirty one dollars. I'm assuming that's a budgeted item.
I would have to look at the uh details of that expenditure. I I don't have the report.
You want me to send that to you after maybe?
Uh, no, that's three, page eleven.
Yes.
I can absolutely look.
And it's under uh quasi-yes construction.
Yep, that would be part of the uh Vets Park project. So yes, that would be budgeted costs. This is the contractor of record for the Vets Park Pavilion project. So that would be a budgeted expense as part of that project.
Okay, for new equipment right now?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, just a quick comment. I did see we're going to be getting a lot of uh janitorial expenses.
Yes, yep. Yes, uh I guess if if I could back up, administrator's report, uh happy to report um our new um custodian has begun work here in the village. Um, and we have to uh procure um supplies uh for MBUs. The contracted cleaning folks brought their own in. Um, so yes, over the course of the next uh uh couple report of bills reports, you will see larger than normal um custodial supply expenses. Those are all budgeted for by each individual departments and really it is kind of uh building out and understanding what the needs are of an in-house custodian versus people bringing their own in. Um, so you will see those expenses um uh, you know, it it not as a red flag, just something so the board is aware. It is part of us ramping up our own in-house custodial service.
No, I I just have to make a comment on that. Uh, I saw our candidate here yesterday, what he worked on the sweat. Well, that back computer was really on.
Yep, there's definitely some catch-up work to be done, but um we'll get it to a point of being a a new normal. Pardon me, I hate that term, but a new normal and set the new baseline to be able to move forward and keep our uh facilities in good shape.
Very good. Uh, Jim?
Uh, Jesse? Just could you identify who who our new employee is? Who's our new custodian?
Uh, gentleman's name is Derek. He actually comes to us for Derek. D E R E K. He actually comes to us from Aurora Medical Center, um where he was a uh uh technician for down and um just looking to make a change away from the healthcare industry and is happy to be on board with us uh here in the village with the village.
Any further questions, folks, bills? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you here in three weeks.